So we're on with Randy, yeah. So this is the Audit and Finance meeting of the Indiana Area School District. Today is March twenty fourth, almost April. Twenty twenty five. Jared, you want to start us on your budget projections?
Yeah, we are landing. Next month, April. Canceling the Fourth Monday because of the Educators in Excellence. Banquet. We won't be having our board meeting or our normal committee meetings that evening, but we are looking at scheduling. Because of our flexibility within the committee meetings, we will be having more of an in-depth budget workshop that even on April seventeenth, I believe.
When's the next? So the next board meeting is when? No, you're talking about the end of the second.
I'm talking about April. We'll be changing things up a little bit in April. I just kind of wanted to give the committee a head up, heads up that on April twenty first.
Twenty first.
April twenty first. Which is normally just scheduled for Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. We are going to try and shorten Buildings and Grounds a little bit and spend more of the evening. On the budget as our kind of April budget workshop. Because we have the flexibility to do that within our committee system now, kind of starting with this new year, how we have that set up. And then we won't have the normal scheduled Fourth Monday. Of the month committee meeting or board meeting because of the educators.
Excellence in education.
Excellence in education.
Okay, so we won't have it on the twenty eighth.
Yes, ma'am.
We will have it on the twenty first. That's Easter Monday. Yes, right. And I, I won't be here. I plan to take it, so. Yeah.
Did you say something about the seventeenth?
Seventeen. I thought it was Monday the seventeenth, but it's Monday the twenty first.
So Jared, that'll be for planning purposes, five thirty to?
Five thirty to however long you need. Whatever. That'll be where we really get in depth into the budget.
Right. But Buildings and Grounds will be first?
No.
Nothing, okay.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna do. We had talked about putting Audit and Finance first and giving them as much time as they needed and tack on Buildings and Grounds at the end of that.
Okay.
The audit, the budget's the first.
And then we take, take off the twenty eighth, but that's the excellence.
That's the Excellence in Education award. You should, if you haven't received the invite, they should be coming. Chamber Commerce should be sending those out very soon. So.
Yeah, I haven't seen.
Pencil it in if you don't mind, because typically what we do for that evening is we buy two tables.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's all. We typically buy two tables for that night. So if, you know, if you can't come on the twenty eighth, let us know, but if you pencil it in, pencil it in, it's a good night, so.
It's a very nice night, yes.
Okay.
But in the meantime, I wanted to get to the board. You know, we do projections all throughout the year. And we've seen these, you know, into the fall and everything, but I wanted to get you the most updated one. Which now includes an estimate for twenty four, twenty five, the current school year that we're in. Just the cover page. This is a typical format that the board is used to seeing. But the estimates for twenty four, twenty five, as you can see, when we passed our budget back in June thirtieth, we had a four point one million dollar deficit. That was passed as part of that. Right now, my estimates, you know, it's still, we're only in March here. We saw a couple of months ago. But my estimate is we will end twenty four, twenty five somewhere around two point one million dollars in the negative. We have seen expenditures are, they, they look a little off. Expenditures are higher than what is budgeted for. A big part of that is a transfer. We had our Eisenhower insurance claim come in during twenty four, twenty five. So that there is an expenditure, also an offsetting revenue. For that transfer to come out of the general fund and go into capital reserve, which is, you know, making that number look a little bit like we are. Off on expenditures, but that was not originally in the budget because we were not sure when that was going to settle, and it did settle this year.
So you just transferred exactly how much?
We have not transferred anything yet. We were. Holding off on doing that. The board hasn't approved to make that transfer yet. So we're looking about another five hundred and some thousand dollars.
When do you expect we're going to go?
We can, we can do that whenever. We can wait till we get more into budget. Time, or we can do that right.
The last time the committee agreed we ought to do it.
We can put a motion out there or not. We won't have it for tonight, but we could do it the first meeting in April if we want to.
Okay, so five hundred and what?
Don't have that written. Five hundred.
Wasn't five seventy?
It would be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty nine and thirteen cents.
Excellent, Jared.
That's Jared. What was that for?
That is the, you know, we've, we got, we settled the insurance claim back in July and August.
So that's the additional.
That's the additional money minus any expenses or the attorney fees.
Okay, got it.
And we've already reserved the three, isn't it three fifty? Was it, how much did we reserve this year earlier? From last? When was that?
We, at the close of the twenty three, twenty four, we transferred. I believe it was around three hundred thousand dollars as of June thirtieth.
Was it more, was it?
Oh, it was about three. It was, might have been just, it was, I think it was right at three hundred thousand.
Yeah, and that was for twenty three, twenty four. We didn't do anything in the current school year.
I thought it was three twenty five. Am I mistaken?
I think it was three hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, that does not impact this year at all. That was to close out twenty three, twenty four.
Three hundred, three hundred?
I, I don't, I'd have to take a couple of minutes here. I don't have a.
Okay. Um, go on, please.
But again, twenty four, twenty five, it's, you know, our revenues are coming in slightly higher than what we have projected, which is really helping to close that gap. The big revenues that are coming in higher are basic ads, special ad, and we passed our budget before the state did, so we received some additional funding there. Interest earnings are also coming in slightly higher than what we had budgeted for. So, you know, these numbers are still, they're not final. It is looking, we are doing better than what we have budgeted for in twenty four, twenty five, but still seeing a negative. A potential loss of two point one million dollars is not where we would like to be. We did raise taxes for twenty four, twenty five. To five and a half percent. It did help bring that original, the four down, you know, our deficit down to the four point one. But we are currently running a structural deficit in our budget.
But we did have a slight budget surplus. Last year.
In twenty three, twenty four. Yeah, we're not, yeah, I'm talking about twenty four, twenty five.
But last year we did. The same, yes, and we weren't expecting.
No, but we didn't, I don't know that we began the year in such a large deficit. And then when we start to look into twenty five, twenty six, we are currently looking at a six million dollar budget deficit. Going into twenty five, twenty six.
Pretty hard to predict into the future at this point. Things are so. It's a number. All accepted as a number. Who knows what's going to happen, but I think we have to be prepared for anything. Let's face it. Okay, so. Do you want to talk then about, while we're talking about the budget, you have two thousand sixteen general obligation interest earnings. Do you want to talk about that? Just so we get, so we can put that into the picture as well. The two on your agenda?
Number two, I just wanted to update the board on. Two weeks ago, I received an email from PFM who is Pugget, which has been monitoring our bond issues. We, the two thousand sixteen bonds, which we first took out for the potential Ben Franklin project, and then we've been holding on to. Which we finally used up at some point last year for the Eisenhower project. What typically happens is you are not allowed to, because they are tax-free bonds, you have free year to earn whatever interest you would like, whatever you can on them. After that, you are not allowed to earn more interest than what you are paying in interest yourself. And because of the fluctuation in interest rates from two thousand sixteen to the past couple of years, we did. Get into a position where we were earning more interest than we were allowed. Not a bad thing. It's the way they advise you is you maxed out. Absolutely every cent of interest that you possibly could earn on those bonds. But unfortunately, we do owe one hundred and twenty four thousand, nine hundred and ninety one dollars and forty seven cents back on the bond. Interest that we earned just on those two thousand sixteen. The other bonds we, that we've taken out for the Eisenhower project. We have not even held on to for the three-year period, so. I'm not worried about owing, owing any interest back on those bonds, but this, we do owe the one hundred and twenty four thousand. We will write it directly to the IRS.
So, so we as a government agency don't get to keep the money. We send it to another government agency for them to keep. Is that, is that essentially what's happening?
Yes, sir.
To be clear.
Makes sense, doesn't it?
Think it's wonderful.
What, Jared, where does that number show in our finances?
It's not show, this is just the general fund. That interest that you see there will come out of the bond proceeds, the money that is. The bond, bond proceeds and the interest that is sitting up Pugget right now. So it has no negative impact on the general fund as it sits right.
Your medical expenses that you're projecting in this. Oh, and you're still putting charter school in about the same problem. Boy, that goes up. Wow.
Charter school, we are.
Cyber school, I should.
Cyber school, we're seeing significant impact. Our healthcare rate for next year is budgeted at over sixteen percent increase. Through the consortium, which we participate in. I mean, our, our rate is one of the lower rates within the consortium. The P serves rate, though small, is still running at thirty four percent next year. Which is a significant cost to our budget. Cyber school, we do have a, we've seen a slight uptick in the number of enrollments there. Taking it up over the two million dollar marker. Transportation, I would say, is another big area that we've seen significant increases, and you can see. Just from, you know, two thousand twenty one to now, almost a one and a half, over one and a half million dollar increase in transportation costs.
Is that due to someone thinking we've added all those bus runs to? Because we don't get reimbursed for the, the ones who pick up, like in the borough that technically. Or within that.
We didn't add buses because of the borough pickup. I mean, it doesn't help with our reimbursement. We don't get reimbursement for those kids. I mean, our just daily rate has significantly increased over the past couple of years. And we have added a good bit more of special needs transportation as well. Yes.
They don't get reimbursed for those kids.
No, we don't, because it was, it was in a mile or whatever they are, but it doesn't cost us anything to pick them up.
What about that fit with the healthcare and the? Weight loss drugs?
We are still in having conversations about trying to make changes to our healthcare plan that would not allow for. Certain weight loss drugs unless absolutely necessary, medically necessary.
Well, when do you expect to have that resolved? First, is that baked into these numbers?
It is not baked into, any changes to that is not baked into these numbers.
So worst case scenario. With this problem they're having on this consortium with these Zenfis. Pretty bad, isn't it?
It's, it's bad for the entire consortium for Indiana. It's about two hundred thousand dollars.
Chris, did you have a question?
Yeah. Jared, how many people are in the cyber school right now from our school district?
We are almost close to a hundred.
So two hundred for two million?
One hundred to two hundred.
Almost one hundred.
Oh.
Yeah, almost close to one.
Two, two million. Those one hundred kids are costing us about two million dollars.
Twenty thousand bucks a kid.
On average.
Kids, which is more than us to educate them, and they don't have to maintain schools.
Not quite one hundred, he said.
You know what I mean? I mean, here they are. They don't have to maintain order, and yet they're still charging more than we would cost us with buildings. Period, the kid, or student.
Do we have, do we have that number? I know we said it before, but. Like, what is our average tuition?
Isn't it about for us per?
Yeah, for us. I knew we said it before. It's about sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars for a regular ed student and almost thirty for a special needs student.
I guess if you did an average, it's double.
Yeah.
Still.
And of that, almost a hundred. How many of them are classified as special needs versus regular?
In cyber?
I'd have to look.
Are you mean just in cyber? Are you talking about?
No, just in the cyber. I'm gonna say more than that, because.
Can you look up?
Really?
Their academic success.
This is budget.
We can, we can try.
I don't know that we have it, like, our. Kids' academic success in there. I don't know whether we get that information from the cyber schools or individual.
You're saying special needs take up half. Would you repeat that?
I'm gonna say that the, in order for the average cost per kid to be almost twenty thousand dollars. Most of them have to be special students because we get, we pay what we, what it costs us to educate them, so.
It's not special needs, it's those with IEPs.
Correct. That's right. Then, you know, the. Regular education student costs sixteen thousand dollars and the special education student costs almost thirty. For the average to be twenty thousand, it's gotta be quite a few students.
If a student has a gifted, a G I E P does that, they're just paid the basic rate if they're in there, so they're not.
Either that or we don't, either that or none of that could be true. They could just be overcharging us.
No, they're allowed to overcharge us.
Well, I mean, something's going on. Where are they getting these reserves?
I think that sometimes after they're, they're regular ed and they go in and they test them and deem them to need IEPs. The cyber school will test them. Am I wrong about that?
That's happened before.
It's happened before. So then they say, oh, you know, you're, you didn't do well in school because you're special needs and your Indiana didn't identify that. So then we have to pay the extra. We can't dispute their assessment, right?
No. There's no means to do that right now.
See, hey, I don't know about money, but I don't.
Yeah, but you can figure that, you know.
Yeah.
Even if you couldn't dispute it, it's a losing battle. Kid by kid, it's, it's tough. The parents are gonna push back. And we've seen so much in here about. We can afford the legal fee to push back the other direction.
And last year, Tom, they gave us what our students that go to our cyber school, how they're performing compared to the cyber schools that we paid for. And there is a difference. Our, our students here in our cyber school are doing better. They're not doing as well as if the kids come to school. But they're doing better than those expensive cyber schools.
I'm not sure I can get each individual student, but we looked up their test scores. We score about thirty percent higher than. The average.
Our averages.
Thirty percent more of our students score at or above.
Our cyber school or our regular students?
All of our students, cyber.
And we might be able to get that information, but I'm, I'm curious if we're spending twenty thousand dollars a student, how successful academically they are.
And it's an important note that a lot of the cyber students don't even take the test. Commonwealth Cyber Charter Academy had thousands, literally thousands of students who did not take the PSAs or keystunts this past year.
Can they get away with that?
We have to have a religious exemption on file for each kid that doesn't take it here.
It's a crazy thing that we're, you know, we're so accountable here for what we do.
Yeah.
But there's no accountability from a cyber perspective, and no one's looking at their grades and how poor it is, but just. Millions, hundreds of millions of dollars poured into those organizations, and they're living so lavishly.
I think legislators getting kickbacks too.
Possibly.
There's definitely some strong PACs that support certain political moves that are supported by the. But I don't, I don't. PACs definitely are a fundamental campaign. I think, Chris, I saw a figure on one of today's news feeds. Something about a billion dollars a year total.
Is what, countrywide?
No, state.
Pennsylvania is a billion.
I believe I saw that thing, yes.
Yeah, for real.
I was talking to, I was talking to someone today that runs a small school, about the half, half size of ours. He said they were on the hook for about, it's up to a million dollars. He said it's just killing their budget.
Yeah.
Anything else about the budget that we wanted to ask anybody about the cost of the revenues? Anybody have any questions?
The only, the only two positions, my, my only other comment on this, the two positions that I have included in here that the board. Has not approved yet. I did add an additional position here at East Pike Elementary School. Just as a classroom teacher, just because in case of. Last year, we had a big kindergarten where we had to add a sixth teacher, which. Those kids will now be moving into first grade and will probably need another teacher, a sixth grade teacher or a sixth teacher in first grade. So if we would have the same enrollment at East Pike, we will need, again, six kindergarten teachers as well. So I did put that in there.
Which line?
It would be, the salary would be part of.
One twenty one.
Would be the, the one twenty one, the salary would be. And then I did add a position with Eisenhower opening next year. We will need an additional custodian in the evening at Eisenhower, just because of the sheer size of the building. There are only two evening custodians at Forest Man, so when all the kids are over there, we did not have additional staff at. At the junior high when Eisenhower had the fire and they were all moved over there. We will be taking a look at the staffing at the junior high as far as evening custodians. To see if we could possibly move one of those to Eisenhower, but I did want to be just proactive and put that additional position in at Eisenhower. If we, we will need at least the third person at Eisenhower, so.
Do you know how many teachers are retiring this year, the end of this year?
Technically, at the end of this year, there are two.
At the end of this school year?
At the end of this school year, there are teachers who have already put in for retirement at some point next year, which I think is four, three or four.
Sometime after the school year starts.
Yes.
Okay.
So what is, so our, our index this year is five point five percent?
Five point two.
Five point two. What does that generate approximately?
If you were to.
At five point two percent.
At five point two, it is right around one point eight million dollars.
Anything else?
We will have a lot more of that type of information, and I can share spreadsheets like that prior to our meeting. Next week, or not next week, the next month with the board, just so you have some thoughts and hopefully questions when we. Have our budget workshop next month. But I did want you to take a look at these numbers. I also shared with you the projection we had when we approved our budget. In June to show you the projection for twenty five, twenty six back then with a budget deficit of six point two. So not a whole lot has changed in the past nine months as far as the projection goes itself.
You had another point you wanted to make about the, you said I have two more things.
Just the, the two positions.
And they're not certain that you're just projecting because you think it may be possible and evidence suggests maybe.
The, the, yes, the custodian position, we will definitely need a third custodian at Eisenhower. Whether we can move that from somewhere else in the district or not, that's yet to be seen. And then the teaching position really is just kind of being proactive as far as if we need it whenever.
When's kindergarten registration?
May eighth and ninth, seventh, eighth and ninth, somewhere around there.
Hmm, so we should.
Well, we get a lot in the summer. Yeah, we usually get a lot.
Forty always in the summer.
Yeah. Well, some ideas.
Then you factor in a teacher at about what, per year, one ten, one twenty?
It's probably closer to one twenty, one thirty. I have an average starting salary of around sixty eight thousand dollars. And that's in case we hire an experienced teacher compared to a new teacher right out of college.
Well, keep plugging. Anything else then? Anybody? Okay, let's move on to, actually, I'd like to spend some time on the food service budget. It's interesting how it's done. I don't know if we have a, we have a picture of it here.
The one that's attached to, you guys all have a handle.
To get through, through all the ins and outs, you're trying to figure out what we made and what we, what we were reimbursed for, total revenues versus. Okay, so why don't you go over this for us, and so we understand.
Yeah, the first page there just shows you. And we work very closely with Chartwell's to help put this budget together. So this isn't just me working on it. This is our food service director. And then also her regional manager to help put this budget together. But the first page there is what we expect as far as income just from actual student payments. Meaning if you are a paid lunch person, this is what you're gonna pay if you're reduced. A la carte, if you're buying extra stuff at lunch, this is that revenue. So it's actually a very small portion of the food service budget. It's probably a third of our overall revenue. And a lot of that also is part of now, nobody pays for breakfast, and we were projecting that as well next year. But nobody will be paying for breakfast as they have been for the past two years as the state has picked up that tab. But that's around the five, almost five, or half a million dollar mark there for in-school revenue. The next page is the federal revenue that we were projected to receive, and that's around a million dollars. That's on everything from breakfast and lunch. But the majority of that probably coming from free students who eat and our reimbursement that we receive through them for both breakfast and lunch. So that's just over a million dollars from the federal government, and then the smaller portion is state reimbursement.
So it costs us in terms of what we're charging, four ninety three.
What do you mean, four ninety three?
Four hundred ninety three thousand, nine hundred, four hundred ninety seven dollars. That's what you have on the first page, school lunches.
That's the revenue coming in. That's not what it's cost.
That's what they're, yeah, I know, but that's what they're paying us, and then this is what we'll be reimbursed.
Yes, the one million, over, little over a million, and then we get around two hundred and four thousand dollars from the state.
So what will we spend it all on?
Well, the next couple pages. Go into food costs is around six hundred and fifty six thousand, six hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. We get commodities. We don't actually get the food and commodities. We get money to put towards food. Instead of actually getting commodities of around seventy eight thousand dollars.
So when you say food costs, let's go through it. The breakfast is you're getting about a hundred and sixty four thousand. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to follow you on those pages, so I see.
We get around a hundred and sixty four thousand in state reimbursement. On page three.
Yeah, I know, but. Left this hill's subtotally. Total state reimbursement, two hundred and other income, forty five thousand. I guess what I wonder is why you call total revenue and not total reimbursements. That's what I know. It's not revenue to us. It's, it's a grant, basically. I don't, that's, I never get how they plug in the terminology. It's confusing because we're not raising that as revenue.
No, I mean, we book into revenue in the food service fund.
Yeah, okay, well, all right. It's not considered grants. I know that's revenue, but we, do you itemize it as a grant?
No. We submit for reimbursement. We submit monthly how many meals we serve, broken down by free, reduced. Paid, and then from there, that drives the state and federal reimbursement.
And do you do that accounting or just Chartwell's?
We do that. Chartwell's is not allowed to get involved in that. So we have a. The paid admin system who manages and files for the reimbursement. Chartwell's is not even allowed to have access to the system.
This, this is theirs. Whose system are you using when you plug these numbers in? Yours or theirs?
This system is just a statewide document that.
Okay.
Put it together, that they, I mean, they have input into their budget because at the end of this, they have a guarantee that they provide us.
Okay.
So they are heavily involved in putting the budget together. So they are heavily involved in putting the budget together.
Alright. No, I just want you to keep going. We need to understand this because, you know.
Starting on page five is the expenses.
Jared, what's, um.
Full food authority, that's what we are.
So our cost is two seventy-six for that.
That is just our labor. We have basically five, six people remaining in our, that we employ the food service department. Um, probably ten years ago, maybe a little bit more. We started switching all the food service workers over to Chart Wells.
And that's cost we see on the next page of six fifty.
That is their direct labor and benefits of the six fifty-seven.
What page are you on? Are you counting front and back? You don't, you never nimmulate these pages.
So page four.
Don't have access to do that on this document now, but I am pricking, counting front and back as.
Okay, so one.
One page.
Three is the project operating cost for participating. You finished with three?
Yes.
Three, if you circle, Julie, your point at the bottom of the page, put a circle around the revenue summary. One point seven seven three, that's your revenue.
Yeah.
All in revenue. And then on the next page, page four, two seventy-six, four oh five, is the, uh, that's our employees. And then he was, you were taking us to the next page, next Chartwell.
Labor, yes.
It's six fifty-eight. And then the feed, it's five seventy-eight. Also food, right?
Yes.
It's the program.
I understand that. I can't imagine nobody's fussing about that. That's a crazy, okay. And nor do you have line items up and down these things. Alrighty, five.
Page five starts the expenses, the food expense of seven fifty-six, minus commodities. Um, and then the food service labor and fringe benefits of the six fifty-seven. Um, which again, they have the majority of the food service workers now. We only have four full-time people in there, then we have the driver and then a part-time administrative assistant, so.
How many do they employ?
Um, probably around twelve or fifteen.
Jared, on the benefits when they're not our employees, the Chartwell, do we pay their benefits?
We don't pay their benefits directly. We, Chart Wells bills us, but they do, we have to submit all this plus additional detail to the state and they have to break it up by individual employee and how much them benefits and majority of the benefits is social security, Medicare, um, and a couple of other fringe benefits. But they, they pay that directly. That does not go into like our healthcare consortium or anything like that.
Right, and, and they're not in any bargaining unit in our district?
No.
That's okay.
The four members who are still our employees are in our support.
Right, love that.
So then when they retire, then they are replaced by.
I would expect probably in the next three to four years, we will not have any remaining school district food service employees.
And your, these, these reports go into the state, but not the federal?
Nope. It goes into the Department of Food and Nutrition, which is a branch of PDE. And they will go down through it. Again, this is kind of the summary. There's probably about twenty other pages we submit. And then they ultimately approve it, um, approve the budget.
But.
I'm not gonna go down through all the direct costs. There's a lot of different things listed there.
Okay.
So there's about eighty-four thousand dollars worth of direct cost. Uh, we do have to break out, um, the four thousand and fourteen thousand or some of the costs. Internal catering is just maybe things that we do during the year here. Um, if there's different lunches, if there's other events like that. The sponsor to sponsor would be, we provide meals to Adelby Village right across from the junior high. And they are a sponsor themselves, so they put in for reimbursement. Um, they're approved through PDE as well, so that is kind of broken out separately. Um, they are our only sponsor to sponsor that we provide meals to.
Last year on that Aaron dinner, did we pay for that or did Aaron? When we hosted it, so that was on our dime.
Yeah, we all take turns paying for that.
Okay.
Warren didn't, I mean, they gave it a budget.
They give us a budget, but anything that was above and beyond the budget, it's on ours. We were pretty close to.
Yeah, and how that would have affected last year's budget, like the food service is not allowed to pay for that. We would have, the district would have, food service sent a bill to the district. And then Indiana School District wrote a check for the food service program and then Aaron reimbursed us for it. But at the end of that, our annual cost will be around one point five million dollars, one point six million dollars. Projecting a profit of a one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. With Chart Wells guaranteeing us a profit of seventy-five thousand dollars.
So the excess, what, what do you plan, what, what, what's the plan? Some of this goes to pay for new equipment at Eisenhower or what, what exactly?
That will be that we already have enough money in our food service program to pay for that. This will just continue on with any replacement of equipment, um, that we need in the other buildings.
Is there a amount that you cannot go beyond in terms of your, actually what you're making on this without spending within a certain time period?
Not individually in a year. PDE, the Department of Food and Nutrition only likes to see a, basically a three-month um, operating cash surplus. So at the end of the year, when I report in December all of our final expenses for the previous year, if we have more than three months projected cash surplus, then what we're projecting as expenses, I have to write a, this explanation or what, what our plan is to use that kind of a corrective action. Um, the past couple of years, knowing that we were gonna be spending the half a million dollars at Eisenhower on the kitchen equipment there. Um, that has been my explanation as to how we were gonna use that up, so. Um, after we pay for Eisenhower and then the potential East Pike project, the freezers and coolers for that, we would be under that cash surplus, um, but a hundred and forty-four thousand could be added to that at the end of next year, so. And this budget does not include any type of price increase for, um, student meals.
Jared, do we have to use that surplus for, you know, put in the budget for equipment and stuff like that? We can't use it for anything additional like that reduction or?
No, it has to stay within the food service program.
Okay.
Yep.
How are we doing on delinquent accounts for kids?
We are seeing significant increases in that.
How significant?
Um, we, where we've always been, right around a thousand dollars, we're probably at five or six thousand dollars at this point.
How soon do you usually write that off if it's not paid?
We technically have never written it off. We have always, I mean, we, we make phone calls, we send letters. We have been very fortunate, prior to COVID, we had some people make donations directly to the food service program to write those debts off, so. Coming out of COVID, we were at a zero amount without having to write any of them off. Um, at some point, if a kid graduates and still has that negative balance and is never gonna come back into our school. Um, we will look at writing those off, but we have donation money from anonymous donors who we typically try and I want to say make guilds with parents, but you know, we can understand that some parents are struggling to, you know, pay that lunch. Um, we will try and use some donation money to help meet them in the middle. If you make payments, we will help you pay that down. Um, but we are at the highest point that I have seen at Indiana since the past, over the past couple of years. We've seen that increase. And we are hoping, you know, we've been talking about East Pike Eisenhower, um, our Ben Franklin project. Um, of possibly looking and going CEP at two primary buildings, which would give free meals to all kids in those buildings. We've hit that poverty threshold with those two buildings and possibly even Eisenhower that would allow it, allow us to in really be a van, could be an advantage to us to go CEP at those two schools where all breakfast and lunch would be free to all kids. Regardless of their income status or their families. Um, which we think would also help families and also help be able to reduce their collections, uh, that we have to to take a look at all the time.
So how is this work? I don't wanna belabor this for too long because right now we're in a pretty decent spot, but you have the Department of Agriculture, correct? Is that correct at the Federal Department of Agriculture?
USDA?
USDA that issues SNAP payments to us or does that not happen? In other words, how does this work? How does money trickle down from the feds through the state to us?
We, once a month, at the end of every month, we submit to the department, to PA Department of Food and Nutrition all the number of meals that we serve, breakfast, lunch, whether the kids were free, reduced or paid. And then they put that all together and submit that to the feds at the state level. And then eventually, the USDA pays the state and then the state funnels that money back to us.
So if there's a disruption, I mean, this letter today said, that you presented to us said, expect disruption, so. Can this money, can this surplus be used if there is a disruption in the payments back and forth between all these different entities?
It can be used for cash flow purposes, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Majority of our money within this program comes from the federal government.
Yeah, right. So, so we're talking maybe, it, it doesn't even cover thirty days?
A monthly payment? It may cover thirty days of expenses. I mean, Chart Wells bills us once a month. Um, so, you know, we're outside of our payroll, which is every two weeks, we're really only writing, you know, one check a month out to Chart Wells.
Okay.
The weekend.
So I'm a little worried. Because it's pretty quick. Our, our, our payables are pretty quick, go ahead.
So from a practical point of view, we really only have two months, April and May in the school year. I know it's not quite exactly that, but effectively that's the amount, so we can make it through those two months. And the federal government would have three months to get it figured out before we'd be back into having school.
School again, is that? Yeah, we have enough, we, I mean, our balance remaining even after Eisenhower is enough to pay for a couple of months of bills if we had to. And as soon as we hit June, like Chart Wells does not bill us over the summer if they're not providing services.
Alright, okay, good.
On the agenda tonight to approve that, then I will submit everything to PDE over the next several weeks. We just have to have approval by June thirtieth from PDE, so.
Just on the food program?
Yes.
Okay, now, so you don't directly ever deal with the feds through the food program? You don't call the feds, you don't submit anything to the feds that goes to PDE?
Yep. PDE, Department of Food and Nutrition. They're the ones that come in and audit us.
That's good.
Yep.
Yeah.
I asked you two questions on the survey?
Yeah, go ahead.
One, Jared, I'm looking at last year's, uh, financial statements, just curiosity question, and if you have to get back to me, no worries. The salaries on the audit were one hundred and forty-five thousand and the Bennys were one seventy-four. Is it odd that the Bennys will be higher than the salaries? Something charged with the Bennys differently?
I can tell you the, the benefits under the employee con, support contract. Because the four people that are there, um, their benefits, especially their healthcare, are probably more than what they make in a year.
So they are at family health coverage?
Yes.
Um, other question, uh, looking at the expenditures in the food service. Do you typically run, um, excess revenues because of your high number of free and reduced kids?
The past couple of years, we have been.
And you should continue that way, assuming the funding stays.
Yep.
Okay, so my question to you is, since you're gonna, since you do tend to generate, uh, profit in that, can't really call profit, but excess revenues. Um, is there ever any thought to charge any more of the food service expenditures? From the, the general fund pays? We know they pay the heat, the light, the utilities. I mean, that's standard. Has there ever been any thought to try and, since you will, should continue to see that, once this federal figures this out?
I've had some conversations with PD about ways of doing that, like, you know, the cafeterias probably generate more garbage
Oh, exactly, yeah.
Than any, you know, department.
Yes.
You know, they have given us ideas of doing what they call garbage study, meaning we'd have to count the number of bags going out of, you know, come, like, how many bags come out from the cafeteria compared to all the classrooms? Um, I mean, our, our total garbage bill for the entire year is around thirty thousand dollars. Um, so, you know, going into a budget the way we are next year is definitely something.
Yeah, are you, are you, no, I've been out of it for a couple of years. They do change the rules, but are you allowed to do utilities?
You are, you have to prorate that based on space and stuff like that, so.
There's a possibility in the future, you will try to build some, if you continue to see this excess revenues generated, then it could pick up the general fund.
But yes, I would, yep, I would like to, you know, if we can come up with a way that us and Department of Food and Nutrition can agree as to how to charge those there. But I would love to start doing that.
We put your office over there, you can come back.
I can see it through the whole way of things. But, yep.
Okay, so that's on the motion for tonight. Um, E-rate contracts for data line maintenance.
We are just seeking board approval. This is a typical, we don't, we don't do it every year, but both of these, these are contracts with uh, local providers to maintain the fiber that connects all of our buildings and then also our Alpha Building up at the Community Guidance Center. Um, they were just up for renewal. We do receive sixty percent reimbursement on these contracts and they're on the board, the district live fiber is staying with, uh, DQE. Who is also, who I believe the IU gets our internet from. Um, we did bid these out through the E-rate process, so these are just the two lowest bidders and we need board approval. And then I submitted to the feds. This is one thing where we work directly with the feds on, um, to get sixty percent reimbursement for these services, so.
Questions? Upcoming capital projects and funding, junior high roof.
Just wanted to continue this conversation with audit and finance and I did put an attachment in here. Um, as we were talking about budget, by the summary of capital reserve as far as where it stands, and we've been having conversations with not only the junior high roof, the high school classroom renovations, the freezer cooler projects at East Pike, and just kind of wanted to keep the committee updated on really the impact that that is going to have on capital reserve, so. We started at the top there, um, the twenty-four, twenty-five with almost one point, or four point two million dollars in our capital reserve. Um, with these projects and also think we've already approved for this year, including maintenance trucks. Business center turf, the district van, we are looking at projects of almost two point one million dollars. Um, and again, that includes the junior high roof, the freezer project, cooler project, the high school renovation, classroom renovation. And then down below there is just kind of the ongoing items that Dave Bright and his maintenance crew have the authority to go do just things that are ongoing within the district of three point four. If all of these projects were to come to fruition, and again, they're not all gonna happen in the current school year, but to give you an idea, we would be down to around nine hundred and forty thousand dollars at the end of all those projects within our capital reserve. That is taking out, as I think Mr. Harley was talking about, taking out the Ike insurance proceeds that are currently sitting in that four point one million dollars because they were.
What about the Ike money?
The Ike money, the seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars that was already sitting in capital reserve that was transferred two, three years ago. Taking that money out, as always, is going towards the Eisenhower project, we would have nine hundred forty thousand dollars.
I missed the last part, I'm sorry. Can you say it again? So the Ike money has not been transferred and we're probably gonna vote on it.
Part of it has. Two or three years ago, we received some money. That seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand is what's showing down at the bottom there. That has already been transferred. We received two or three years ago and the board voted transferred into capital reserve.
Okay.
Taking those funds out, we would have around nine hundred and forty thousand dollars left in capital reserve.
And if we put it back in, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Now, is there any, is there any demand to take them out at this point?
No.
We can do that money in. This is, this is your belt suspenders and. We couldn't leave that money in. This is, this is your belt suspenders and.
Yeah. The other page that I attached there is just a summary of uh this is what was presented to the committee at either buildings and grounds or on finance in February, but showing you kind of where I think we're falling out for the Eisenhower project, which is near complete. Um, I am showing with that insurance money going towards the project, a surplus of one point six million dollars. From what we have borrowed to date to put towards a project and where those final numbers are coming in. And a lot of that is the interest that we've been earning on all those bond proceeds over the past two or three years.
So the seven sixty-seven could stay in and we might have as much as one point six to put back into the capital reserve if we so choose.
You would take that seven hundred and sixty-seven, back that back out. So you may have nine hundred thousand left over from the Eisenhower project to put towards some of these projects. So.
Oh, I see. You're going back in. Okay. All right.
Nine hundred thousand would go back in, twelve of those nine forty.
Say that again?
For the nine hundred thousand.
You could, you could, or you could.
Or we could, we, okay.
Let's say, let's say we have an even nine forty left. That's what the Eisenhower, the high school project is looking like it could cost us. That's the architect's estimate. We would just pay for that project out of the remaining bond proceeds.
But, but at the end of the year, in the year when all the dust settles, we'd have about one point eight million in capital reserve.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Possibly.
Yeah.
The way I understand.
Cause I'm adding back, yeah.
But if you use some of those proceeds to you won't have that much, correct?
If you take the bond proceeds that are already sitting in capital reserve, at the end of the year, you would have one point seven. And then you would have another nine hundred thousand dollars. So you're looking around two point eight million dollars.
Possibly, so we could have a capital reserve.
Yes.
And you're already adding, because we just got a settlement and we're going to vote next week or next month, first meeting, to put that money in. But are we going to put that money back in? If if we do, then he's right, correct?
That, that doesn't, I did not include moving that other half a million dollars in yet.
But if you did.
But if you did, that would be additional on top of that.
The top of the two point eight?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So basically, at the end of this, at the end, at the end of the, when all the dust is settled, we could have over three million dollars back in capital.
Yes.
Or could that five hundred thousand be used for next, against next year's budget?
Yeah.
You could choose to leave it in your general fund.
To help reduce.
So we, we would have that off, we can make that a business.
So you could put it, you you could put it, yeah, we wouldn't have to. That's the question.
That's what I said, we we shouldn't move it next month because we may be.
Well, we don't know. That's what we're talking about. So what do you think?
Well, I think um.
Cause that's a big question.
I think Doug is started to hit down that the correct path there. I think until we actually see where the budgets, your projection of the potential six million or whatever, you know, that five hundred thousand would certainly go a long ways to 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 knock a chunk of that down. Um, so as long as we're not under any kind of a timing gun, I think we ought to just kind of sit tight on it and wait and see what happens.
So we wouldn't even bother. Does anybody want to bother with the motion or just want to go ahead and keep it in the the general? Well, now, I mean, so you just made me think of something. So the two hundred, I have to look at these papers again. We normally do a reserve. You have a minimum reserve in the budget.
There are the budget reserve in there. That's not there necessarily to transfer to capital reserve. That is in there in case during the school year, we have any unexpected expenses, like we need to add a teacher that wasn't budgeted for. Typically, if you don't need to do that, we kind of use that amount to transfer. Now, based on the future budget projections, I do not foresee any year that we will have extra funds in the near future to transfer to capital reserve.
You always say that. Every year I've ever been here, you always said that.
And we have not seen, we have not seen budget deficits to this extent. So.
Well, we say that every year too. However, however, the question is, do we need any kind of a reserve, Chris? I mean, we can afford to make a resort. What he's telling us, yes, you can keep it and we probably should.
Yeah.
To avoid a tax hike, but presumably on our biggest investors, give them some relief or what do you think? Should we reserve something?
I like the idea of keeping a small reserve, but to Doug's point, I like the idea of using some of it. Right? Um, towards the the deficit that we're projecting. I think that would be a smart use of the the capital.
So we.
Take some pressure off the taxpayers.
Yeah, so we could consider in the budget workshop, the key issue is, is what kind, what, what do, how, do we want to split that up a little bit so that A, the taxpayers and our che, our largest investors have some sort of a tax relief unlike last year. Um, and also move something towards the reserve, because these, these projects add up and all of them need done. That's the real quandary. None of them, we've scrubbed them so much, none of them are absurd.
I think we won't know until the prices come in form, whether we're going to be able to fill.
That is true. So something to think about though. I personally think we should always be disciplined enough to do some sort of a reserve. If you don't, you end up not saving enough savings, you know, they say, what's the guy say that wrote the great book? You've got to save every save every month a percentage. He's right, because it that's right, it works for for everybody if you just do it. So that would be the only thing I would caution about.
I think having a little bit of pocket too allows us to do some of this stuff, so that you don't have to go out far.
Yeah, exactly.
My, my vote would be to minimize the borrowing. Now, we carry additional weight on our shoulders.
Costs us more. Who knows what's going to happen to rates? That's a big uncertainty, but it could, my cost is more to borrow than it has and what the heck. Yeah.
Right, I saw that. I highlighted that.
It's still ongoing. Okay, so, um.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, capital projects, that two thousand sixteen earnings, do you still have money? Still bond monies from two thousand sixteen on issue?
No, we have spent.
That's all done?
Yep, yep.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? I just want to make sure we get that issue right on that budget workshop. So we won't vote on it next meeting. But we are going to face it front and center. So be thinking about it. Thank you. We're done.
Policy and personnel?
I know that everybody's in a really good mood. Let's talk about discrimination and harassment.
All right.
So if you all remember last year, um, there was a bit of a hubbub over Title Nine. Title Nine, um, the policy, the law had some changes, the policy was changing, there were lawsuits. They were filed by school districts across the country in response to Title Nine. At that point, we tabled the, the uh changes, right? And and because you all wanted me to see, you know, what was going on with some of these lawsuits and that was wise of you all, because in twenty, in the beginning of this year, the uh a federal judge issued a, an order that um basically threw out a lot of those changes, the twenty twenty-four version of Title Nine. Shortly after that, we got a dear colleague letter from the Office of Civil Rights, which is was currently under the Department of Education. Don't know like the status of all that right now, given the the changes that we saw today, but um, but basically that, your colleague letter said, we will be enforcing the twenty twenty version of the law that was passed and approved, not the uh twenty twenty-four version. So the Office of Civil Rights is the enforcement agency of Title Nine. So they're saying we're following the twenty twenty version. So P S B A basically went back to the twenty twenty version. They went through the uh the updated language and they are now making recommendations for us to be in compliance with that law. And that is the Defense of Human Relations Act. Um, specifically what was changed most recently were the definitions of uh protected classes. So those protected classes are reflected in the policy one oh three and policy one oh four, because policy one oh three deals with students, one oh four deals with the adults, the employees, but um and you can read down through that, but basically they described, uh, they added pregnancy as a protected class. Um, they updated what race includes, um, and basically changed the the rule to basically say, um, uh, race can mean ancestry, national origin, or ethnic characteristics. It can include anything related to interracial marriage or association. It could be any traits associated with race, but which could include, but not limited to hair texture, protective hairstyle, braids, locks, twists, et cetera. It could uh mean Hispanic ancestry, uh, national origin, origin, or ethnic characteristics. And then it also includes persons of any other national origin or ancestry as specified by the complainant or in the complaint. So basically, race now includes any kind of discrimination based on anything that is offensive to either the the person making the complaint or the person who is the uh subject of the complaint. Um, so those are the updates that we have to make in order to be in compliance with the law of twenty twenty, um, not the twenty twenty-four version. I will mention that there were additional uh protected classes identified in the twenty twenty law, which included some uh uh things related to gender, sexuality. P S B is not making the recommendation to make those changes right now due to the executive orders that were issued by President Trump and his administration right now. So those are just kind of on hold. Uh, but these other uh changes are basically legal mandates to be in compliance with that law and how. So hopefully you had a chance to read through that. Um, all the other language um is smaller, you know, in sequential, they took out um building administrator and turned it into Title Nine coordinator. Um, Jared is our Title Nine coordinator, by the way, for those of you who wonder.
Did the compliance officer?
He's the, yeah, he's the Title Nine coordinator. I'm the the appeals person. So, so if there's a Title Nine complaint, the building principals work with Jared on that. They conduct the investigation, Jared, who chooses the decision if there is an appeal that comes to me. So I'm left out of that. That way we have that that room for the appeals process. Okay? So that's really the crux of policy one oh three and one oh four. Any questions, concerns, comments? Like I said, they're both you know, basically mandatory policies that we have to do to be in compliance now. It was, again, it was wise kudos to you all to, you know, table that while we waited to see what the courts did. Um, you know, and we'll continue to monitor that as it moves forward here. We're good to move on. Um, so this is the first read, or is this? This is the first read.
The one oh three and one oh four tonight.
Correct. We actually had the first read of one oh three and one oh four back a while back, but now that we have amended this significantly. So we're going to count this as first reads again. Okay? All right. And then two thirty-four is, um, again, this is, this is recommended changes. These are not uh mandatory like the others. But given the changes that those laws, um, uh specifically the uh chapter twenty-nine of the U S Code, which talks about breastfeeding accommodations in the workplace. These um pregnant and married students, those, those pregnancy and breastfeeding accommodations would apply to students as well. So they recommend that we make this change to uh update and be in compliance with that law to just for liability purposes.
I'm curious, do we, do we have any pregnant or married?
I'm not sure. I don't think we have any married. Um, I'm not sure if we currently have any active pregnancies, but typically in a school year we do.
Probably not. I think it's about two.
Two.
Pregnant. And and there are students that are engaged to, I don't know when the wedding is, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
When my daughters were in high school, they were complaining that we were teaching sex education much too late, that they were instilling the education classes that already had babies.
Yeah, it's it's sad truth, I know. We've had, we've had pregnancies as young as eighth grade in the past. But I'm not aware of any current.
No, clearly.
Except for the two. I think it's about two.
Our counselors do a great job, you know, taking care of those kids and their, and their kids, you know, so.
Yeah.
I hope they're lucky services. So very possible we have pregnancies that. But these accommodations would mean, and again, the breastfeeding accommodations are already put in place. Uh, we make accommodations for staff and we would definitely make accommodations for students.
That's good. All right, on to field trip.
Field trip, yes, sir. This is uh an addition um in that all other business category. This is a field trip that um is a, an oldie. Um, it used to be done every year. The art club goes to Washington, D C, and they go through some museums and they have a nice uh experience, nice meal. Um, they have done this in the past. They, in the interest of time, I would say to add it to this agenda because we won't have a board meeting until people, so I think, um, so I wanted to make sure that we went up against the gun. So um, I just wanted you guys to be aware of that trip. We support it. It only costs us substitutes. It provides our students in the art club a tremendous cultural experience. So it's definitely something that we support if the board sees to.
How do they get there?
By bus.
Bus, okay.
So. But they raise the money on for the buses. So. So all we have to pay for is the subs, which is a good deal. So, any questions or?
I just had a trip to D C last weekend. I'm all for it.
Good. Did you get to experience any of the cultures?
Right, we ate food. All right, good. No, it was, it was beautiful.
Good. Yeah, we're excited about that. That's one of the big trips.
So we ended on a high point.
Yeah, I like to bring it up. That's why we saved the rest for last.
I know, whatever.
High point, I like it.
Thank you.
With time to spare. That's it.
I'm trying my best. He was chewing candy in my ear before. The microphones were.